Hi guys, this is Prius and I will do another study stream today. And yeah, today the focus will be on preflop. And yeah, I was a bit lazy lately and didn't do enough studying. And yeah, I want to refresh my memory a bit. And in today's session I marked a few hands which I want to look up. And yeah, feel free to also give me your guess if you think the hand in question is a raise or not. So what do you think is Jack 7-4 an open raise? Tough one, I think most likely the answer is no. But I think it's okay because I am a very loose player, recreational player who doesn't know a lot of poker theory. Is in the big blind and we will often have hand against him. And yeah, so raising should be fine and the button also is relatively tight. So that are other factors. But I think GTO wise the hand should be fold. Let's see if I'm right or not. So we will bring up the pillow trainer. And Jack 4-7-9. Jack 4-7-9. Double suited. What should we do? The answer is fold and my guess was correct. Although I still did the other thing and I gave you my reasoning. So adjustments are definitely fine if you get the pot heads up against a loose player. For example, this hand should be okay-ish in position. Next one is this an open raise? I think the answer is no, but we will find out in a second. Yeah, also pretty deep. I did the 100 BB card but it should not be that different for more big blinds. 3-4-6 King. 3-4-6 King. It's not double suited, it's single suited. And actually it's a raise. And we're making a tiny amount of money by raising this hand. And yeah, okay, I was wrong, I was off a little bit. And yeah, again, in this case I think this hand should not be open raised. Because there's a very active three bet in the big blind. And yeah, we don't want to get three bet with this hand, we should have just folded. I mean, this is just very painful if you have to play this hand in a three bet pot and you also cannot fold against a guy who is like re-raising 60% or something. So yeah, this was a mistake. I mean, GTO wise not, but yeah, if you account for the player strategies, this was not correct. Oh, this is another interesting one. First question is if this is an open. Second question is if we can call it three bet. So be my guest to give me your guesses. So this is, let's first do this for UTG. And yeah, when test for middle position as it is for the hand. So let's first test if it's an open on UTG as well. I mean, I'm very unsure if this is an open. I think from UTG most likely it's not an open, but yeah, I don't know. I really don't know and yeah, let's see. Okay, it is open from UTG, so it has to be an open from middle position as well. And we also made a lot of money with a hand like this. That's kind of surprising, but okay. Let's now see what we should do if the action is like this. We also go with UTG, fold, raise, download. Ace 9-9-5 I think was the hand. And we should call. And I think that's exactly what I did. Yes, okay, you can see it in the screenshot, but I made the call. And yeah, at least according to GTO this is correct. Is it also correct if we have only one guy in the pot? I guess so, but let's find out. So he folds, he folds, he raises. Ace 9-9-5. Double suited. And it's the same story. Even if we have just the ace high suited, we should continue as we lose 3.98 instead of 3.5. And this also is an open. So kind of surprising, but that's the truth. In a GTO world. Oh yeah, this was a very tough hand. Yeah, this most likely was no open. Let's find out. From cloud. Download. I think my money is definitely on no open with this hand. Yeah, that's what happens if you get yourself to bet sports preflop. And you, oh, actually that's an open. I think if that's an open, this should also be a call of three bet. But let's find out. King Jack 4-5. Double suited, okay, that's not correct. Needs to be a dollar sign. Black bet as. And yeah, we should call. And that's what I did. I think, what was the action? I think as we see the river spot, it went check-check on the flop. I dunked the turn. I mean, that can't be true, right? I check called the flop, I think. Yeah, yeah, he bets more. I dunked the turn as this card is very scary. His range is aces and kings heavy. And yeah, the risk card should scare him. And on the river I thought, yeah, I made seven, I said not. So let's value bet. And yeah, then I got raised and this is very, very, very tough. Because he's most likely not raising worse for value. And he is probably also not bluffing. Because he cannot assume that he has a lot of fold equity for 50 more. And yeah, giving me odds insanely good ones. So not sure if I can fold here. Against certain opponents who play very straightforward. I think folding might be fine, but against most guys with the top of your range or almost the top of your range, calling is most likely the way to go here. And yeah, we got aces. I don't know why this hand is in here. Ah, okay, I remember. This is to see the stack sizes. And yeah, we all got almost the same stack. So about 300 BB, this hand was very wild. And yeah, the question is actually if I could fold my hand here. Because I think we got another screenshot here. Okay, he won the entire thing. Okay, no more screenshots. It goes this way, I open, he calls, he three bets. This is a guy from a few hands before who is three betting like crazy. I four bet, he five bets and yeah, he jams all in. And at this point is almost certain that this guy has aces. I often have aces too. And yeah, it's not that great if you, if two guys have aces. And that's why I asked myself if I could fold preflop with a hand like this. Yeah, let's try to find out. Actually, as you can see, I didn't fold it. And yeah, this very aggressive, loose guy won a 900 BB preflop all in pot. And let's try to figure out if we can fold. I think actually we should discount good aces from the range of the small blind. But we will not for now, but we might do later. Hearts and we got a queen spades. Something is wrong, what is this? This is a club. Yeah, okay, that's okayish. And this guy has 20% or something. So let's see how we do. Yes, okay, we still got 32%. And yeah, with the money already invested in the pot. This is definitely not a fold anymore. And let's now see how our equity changes if we give him aces that are singles suited or rainbow. This should boost our equity a bit. No, it does not. So yeah, this unfortunately didn't help us. We could also add like ace-ace. Stuff like that. Okay, this doesn't help us at all. What happens if the three better has a lot better balance range? Can we fold in this case? Let's just give him, okay, 5%. Ah, 5% doesn't make any sense. Let's exclude aces from his range and give him like 3-5%. Although this is also not correct. Because this is just taking the top part of the range. And yeah, seems like it is impossible to get away from the aces preflop. What if we could give him like 3-4-5-6? Or what is it? Dollar one gap or something? Dollar two gap? Yeah, so and everything needs to be double suited. What happens if we assign this range? Yeah, okay, in this case we could fold. As you can see, if he is three betting more speculated fans, it comes a lot closer. And yeah, but with the money invested, it might still be not a fold yet. I mean, if we four bet, so yeah, let's just keep in mind that we don't want to fold aces preflop. And yeah, I mean, very, very, very rarely this guy might get on, might get crazy because he thinks that I am going bananas because this guy is crazy. And then he thinks like, I got ace, king, king for example. And now I need to ship all the money in because these guys don't have aces. I block the ace, something like that. So it's a very slim chance, but it might be possible. Okay, so not, should not fold here. This is also clear. Oh, but is probably, I don't know. What do you think? Chat, is this a fold or not? 7-8-9, 7-8-8-9. Let's find out. Fold, raise, download. My answer is call. Okay, I made up my mind. 7-8-9. Single suited. Bam, I'm right. Okay. Good. This, this is also a tough one. I mean, I would always open it because of the recreational player in the small blind. But it might actually be a GTO fold. Back, download. Configuring the pillow trainer to be in the right spot now. And we got 6-7-9-10. 6-7-9-10 with three of a suit. And it's an open. So. Let's go to see what is if we go with four from one suit. It's not an open anymore. What if we make our hand a little bit worse? Let's say that the seven is a five. I think then it's most likely no open anymore. Yes, that's correct. If we got one, one suit that is not blocking itself, it's that an open. I say no, but let's find out. It's not an open. Okay, I was right. Okay, let's move on to the next preflop spot. Ah, okay. Ah, this is again the crazy guy. I remember this hand. I was like slow playing, calling flop, calling turn and on the river it completely blanked. He was not bluffing anymore and check folded. So yeah, strange, I wonder what he had and why he gave up. I mean, was setting the trap so nicely and yeah, didn't work out unfortunately. Okay, is this a defend 4-6-8-10? Blind versus blind? Raise, download. What do you think, chat? I say it is a defend. 4-6-8-10. XXX. Here is a defend. Marginal one, but a defend. Yeah, that's a tough one. It's, it's, it's an open, it's a first question. Puh, puh, puh. I think the answer most likely is yes. We start from UTG because this might also be a UTG open. And when we find out if that's a call of three bet, I think both is true. So we should open and we should call the three bet, but I might be wrong. Again, the chat is again invited to tell me his opinion. Unfortunately, everyone is just passively consuming as it seems. Yeah. You are new, but you could still give a guess. Okay, we are UTG. That's always taking a while. 4-5-10 aces, double suited. Let's see. Yeah, it's an open with, and this was correct. So let's now find out after I raise. Let's first look into the situation if there are no cold callers. And if we should defend against a three bet, I say yes. But yeah, I think it's pretty clear, yes. Yeah, I'm right. And that's now makes the spot a little bit different. Okay, let's click here. What if we got three bet from the MP? I think we should still defend our hand. 8-10, 4-5. Oh, whoa, 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 whoa. Okay, it's a defend if we are double suited, but not if we are single suited. And we don't, actually, we don't print money. It's like very marginal. Yeah, that's what I thought. And let's now go to into the spot as it is. So back, 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 fold, raise. Fold, call. Raise, call, download. Has to be defend as well, but we just have to make sure. 8-10, 4-5. Two filters. And yeah, the double suited version is not defending as it seems. Well, I mean, it is defending, but this is strange. Because we lose more money if we defend. Because it's minus 4.79 or 4.32 compared to minus 3.5. So we should not defend. But it's defending, it's using a mixed strategy and it's defending sometimes. Most of the time it's folding. So yeah, strange things here. I make a screenshot. I hope to get a hold of Jane Endes who built this software and I can talk to him about this. I already tweeted to him yesterday, but he's unfortunately not answering my request. Yeah, let's see if I can get a hold of him on some point later. But now we don't know what this is. Most likely the sim was just not run long enough or something. Yeah, but I'm just guessing. Okay, let's now get to the next spot. First question, should you open ace 3-5-7 under the gun? I think yes. And that's what we will find out in a minute. 3-5-7-ace. It's an open. And what should we do once we get three bet? I guess we should call. 3-5-7-ace again. Black bet as. And we should call the double suited version and fold the single suited version. Okay. The next one, is this an open? Interesting decision. I mean, I think I should not open it against the guy in the big blind because he's three betting like crazy and I don't want to play a three bet pot with a crappy hand like this. So in-game this should be a fold, but it's not GTO to fold this. I'm not sure what GTO suggests. Yeah, I played no limit hold in the past, but since many years I exclusively play pillow when you don't count home games or something where I occasionally play no limit hold from cloud. So let's go to this hand. Back, 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 fold, 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 download. I think this might actually, that's very tough one. Chat, help me out. Eight, queen, jack, three. Eight, queen, jack, three. Two filters. The double suited version is a raise. The single suited version is not in here, so that has to be a fold. How much do we lose making this raise? It's minus 0.15 big blinds. But yeah, with weak player, although it's not a special kind of weak player who is three betting all the time. And yeah, against this is even more, this guy is even more fold. So yeah, okay, next hand. This is not an open UTG. I say, but in-game these hands always look very pretty. And yeah, sometimes in autopilot you raise it. And yeah, let me find out if it's actually correct. Back, 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 download. What was it? 9-9-7-3 or something? I think so. Two filters. It is not an open. If you hide the zero percentage stuff. Okay, next one. I would guess this is an open and also defend against three bet. As this is a three bet pot, but let us find out. But I'm pretty sure that this should be an open. Kings of 9-10. And. King, 7-8-10. Yep, the double suited version is printing money, almost half a BB. So next one. Okay, against this guy, I have to defend for sure because he's three betting like crazy. But is this an open in the first place? With the ace high suited for sure? Not, I think probably is an open. With this table circumstances, it is not. Fold, download. Ace-10, 3-jack. Let's put in the actual hand. Spade. Heart, heart and this is a diamond, two filters. Wow, this is an open raise and it's the most marginal possible. And yeah, let's, I think this is 99% sure a fold against the three bet. But yeah, against a guy who is three betting like 30% of hands, you can't fold here. So that's why you should not open in the first place. Ace-10, jack, 3. You should four bet with the double suited version. But only with a very small frequency. And yeah, what you should defend, my hand should not be defended as you can see. But the single suited versions, some of the single suited versions, especially the ace high suited ones get defended. What is it, what about the jack high suited version? Here are again some crazy things happening. It's more mine to, to play the hand, but he wants, still wants to play it to 3%. Don't get it. Mr. Jane, this is not talking to me. This is not an open, I guess. Although, yeah, quite connected. With a tough one. That's very tough. If the jack high suited, I think it should be an open with the six high suited. I'm not surprised if I should fold this hand. Five, seven. Yeah, I think the hand entered is correct. And double suited version is unsurprisingly a raise. And yeah, the single suited versions seem to be folding. What about the jack high suit? Let's give them a jack high suit. Is this a fold too? Nope. So we need a jack high suit in order to open this end. So you see the, they are very marginal differences. And I think the question here is if I can three bet. Close one. Think we probably need seven instead of a six or a ten or something, but not sure. Um, fold, fold, raise, fold, download. King, six, nine. King, six, nine, eight, the hand. King, six, nine, eight. Small hand. And it should call sometimes, but and fold most of the time. It's also the wrong hand, so forget about this. Let's put in the actual hand. And this one should be called sometimes. So same answer as for the other one. It's again tricky one, because as you can see, yeah, we got again the phenomenon that it's more plus V to call, but he folds the majority of the time. So yeah, strange. What happens if we improve our hand a bit? Can we three bet in this case? Yes, we can. Okay, exactly what I thought. Nice end. Let's move on to the next one. This is probably very close. King, queen, five, six. My bet is on open. Double suited is for sure an open and the single suited version not, as it seems. Where is it? It is. And it's the most marginal open possible. Making zero point zero one big blinds. And it's probably making a bit more with a recreational player in the small blind and in the big blind. What to do with this end? My guess is on fold. Cannot account for limpers, so let's just, what do we say here? Okay, let's say that it's grace and call and now it's on us. In game I probably called and I think that's the right decision against someone who is playing eighty-five percent of hands. And to will make up for the small mistake I made by playing very badly. And our head is a fold, as we guessed. And the mistake is zero point one six big blinds. Moving on. The next hand is with a defend. Let's first look it up against one guy. I think it is not, but let's see. Ten, nine, eight, three. Ten, nine, eight, three. Oh, that's hard. Yeah, it's a fold, but it's very close one, as we lose only zero point zero one more by calling. And yeah, if you think you can outplay your opponents, they're in the hand. Can already be worth calling. This is an open. I think the answer to this is probably not, but might be wrong. I think with ten it's an open, with the nine it's not. That's my guess. Maybe it's even a fold of the ten, but yeah, let's see. Jack, jack, nine, four, single suited from the cutoff. We should fold. What if the nine improves to a ten? Then we should open. Well played. Seems like I still have a very good idea about pre-flop. Is this an open raise? Puff, that is intense, like. No idea. Make your guesses. My bet is on nothing yet, because I'm still trying to decide. My bet is on fold. Maybe limp you. Right. It's a mix between limping and calling, so I was wrong. But you are not making too much money. Uh, who is this an open? I say it is not. For sure an open with the ace high suit, with the ten high suit. I doubt it. But it's close. I think with an active guy in the big blind, it's definitely a fold. And he is re-betting a lot, according to the stats. Two filters. And okay, we need to make it like SDD. See and see what happens. It's a suit is an open, non ace high suit is not an open, as we guessed. This is a good question, very good question. Back, download. What do you think about the next one? Ace, king, seven, five, king high suit from the cutoff. Ace, king, seven, five. Let's go. Let's see, ace high suit is an open, where is the king high suit? Yes, king high suit also an open and that's what I did. Six, seven, six, six, seven, eight. Oh, that's a tough one. Let's, let's do the calculation for one hundred BB. I think it's a fold, because this hand, hands like this play very, very bad. Raise, download. Double suited version might three bet actually, but the single suited version most likely will fold. In my eyes, six, six, eight, seven, six, six, eight, seven. Two filters. And yeah, double suited version is three betting. Oh, single suited version is actually calling. Sometimes it's like a mixed strategy. Although calling makes more money than folding. Oh, that's a tough one. I mean, that's not a pre-flop thing, but yeah, I think folding with top and bottom pair on a board where straight is possible, where flush roll is possible. And yeah, some guy bets pot and it's also three way. It's a way to go. This is an open. I think the question here is if we should call the three bet. And my guess is uh, no. Although it can go either way. I mean, I picked tough hands and not the easy ones. And it's a call. Can see. Yeah. Yeah, it's a call. It's a marginal call, but it's a call, even with three of a once you would be called. So chat had it wrong. I had it wrong too. Is this an UTG open? I say no. PLO trainer will tell me soon. It's annoying, but it's always taking like twenty seconds to load it. Five, ten, queen, six. Let's go. Always a fold, so that was an easy one. I think we had this end earlier and it was an UTG opener or something. And we called the three bet, so yeah, then it should be the call here too. Against, yeah, I think this should be a call in an open. Open definitely a call, most likely to. I mean, maybe even the ace high suit. Now, what's the ace high suit with no second suit is folding, I guess. Let's find out. Fold. Raise, fold, download. So definitely not folding for a three bet with this end. I mean, I'm not. But let's see what the PLO trainer suggests. It's calling. See, also calling the single suited version. No, he's not calling the single suited version. And he's probably not opening the single suited version. Or is there, oh, what's the single suited version? I'm talking bullshit. So he's calling the single suited answer. Double suited version, quite loose this guy. Oh, that's I'm not even sure if I should call this end in the first place. Raise, fold, download. So should we call the button with ace, queen, jack, deuce, single suited? We should call. But only ace high suits if I see this correctly. Okay, let's now find out how we should continue. Once the screamer is in, so we also have to decide if this guy is calling. Let's say he's calling. I think we have to call. Our hand is too good connected, has not potential. Yeah, I would call. And I think the GTO trainer will most likely do. Ace, jack, queen, deuce. Ace, jack, queen, deuce, apply filters. Dum, dum, it's a call and we, it's not even close. Although it is close for the, for the double suited version, it's not close for the single suited version. It is kind of close. And this is not a defend, I guess. What was it? Jack, ten, nine, something with three suits. Jack, ten. Deuce. Jack, ten. Deuce. Nine. And three of suit. And it's a fold. What if we are not blocking our own odds? And still a fold. What if we are double suited? Double suited, it's very marginal, but not a fold anymore. I'm not sure what my question here is. I think the question is if we should open from the button and the answer most likely is not. But might be wrong. Ace, three, six, seven. Eight, three, six, seven, X, X. Two filters. Double suited version is opening. Single suited version to the ace is opening. Everything else is not opening, as it seems. Okay, now, what happens with this one? It's folding, okay. Wow. Can this ever be an open UTG? It could. It, it, it is, I say. But not sure. Not sure. It is an open in my eyes. Ah, are we streaming with delay? I think so. So yeah, I think I forgot to turn it off. And you're always delayed. Ace, seven, seven, six is an open. I was correct. Need to hurry up a bit. Is this an open from the button? Hmm, that's clear, very close. Nine, seven, nine, seven, deuce. Hmm. Oh, I say it's not an open. And it is an open. I was wrong. It's printing money. Is it also printing money if single suited? No, single suited, it's not open anymore. Um, I think that's if you are a no limit hold player, you would never consider folding. I think this is a fold. And yeah, it's not even that close. Queen, queen, four, deuce, two filters. I'm definitely late. I need to do something and forgot about what, what I want to end my study session and go through all the hands I have marked. And yeah, it's, it's just a call if double suited, single suited, it's not. This is to a high degree of certainty, an open raise. It's ten, seven, five. Let's go. It's ten, seven, five. Let's go. Here's the seven, five, double-suited is an open and single-suited, it is also wow. So what is this, what we thought? Is this an open from MP? I this is a close one, but I say it is a marginal open. Although no, I changed my mind. I say it's a fold. Bam, correct, changed, correctly changed my mind. This is an open, I say. Queen, six, five, jack. Queen, six, five, check. It is an open. I was correct about this. This is not a defend. I say. Fold, 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 download. This might be me. Pretty likely. He's asking if my biggest PLO online pot is nine, seven K. And yeah, I don't remember honestly if this is the biggest pot I ever had, but yeah, might be the case. I don't keep track of my biggest pots. In no limit hold'em, I have had a bigger one for sure, but PLO, I can't tell you. Is this an open? I say this is an open and I would bet some money on it. Although, yeah, not sure if I would bet money on it honestly. Ace, queen, four, five. Yeah, it should be an open even with the queen-sized suit. Yeah, yeah. And it is. Wow, it is printing money like crazy. Okay, I'm looking at the wrong card. But yeah, as you can see, we are no fools. We are fools, but this is only the rainbow version. So easy open. Easy open in my eyes. And fold if someone got in before. But let's only see if this is an open, queen, ten, four, five. I mean, might even be not, but with the queen, queen. Queen, what was it? Queen, ten, four, five. Yeah, it should be okay. Queen, ten, four, five. Apply filters. Only three more to go after this one. It's an open, but only the double-suited version. What happened here? What is the question here? I guess the question is if I should call this hand. Back, back, back. Raise, call, download, check, check. Three, nine. I say it's a call. This is a beauty of a hand. Check, check, nine, seven. Check, check, nine, seven. That's the wrong hand I put in. But this one is getting called and reraced sometimes and if we change the eight to a nine, it's getting called even more often. And it's, yeah, it's also getting, it's also three betting, it's not folding, so it's a beautiful hand as I said. One before the last one. This is not an open, I say. And we will find out pretty soon. What was it again? Jack, jack, seven, eight, one suit. Go all the way. Jack, jacks, seven, eight, one suit. Whoa, it's an open. Okay, I was wrong. It's an open, so double-suited is just to be an open too. Yeah, last one. What is the question here? Probably what I should do on the flop. Or if I should, is it? What happened here? What is it? Okay, I was a big blind and I three bet. This probably is the first mistake I made according to GTO. So this is raise, fold, 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 download. We have ace, ace, six, ace. I think that is probably not getting three bet. This will make us too much headache. Post-flop opposition and it's a call. And he even wants to fold the rainbow version. So that's something new I learned here. So the trip aces in hand, double, not with not suit are folded. And yeah, so no reraising is the way to go. And yeah, so we cannot check the GTO solution for this one as this hand is not a three bet, but we could change it a bit so that it's a three bet. And that's what we will do. So this last one will take a bit of wrong back. We raise, no, wrong again. Fold, raise, call. And the flop is four, six, seven. With suit. Are we having this board for seven, four, six? Although we almost got it, I think. Seven, six, three, seven, seven, six, three. Let's choose this one instead as this is the closest to the one. Yeah, we download the solution. We put in ace, ace, six, jack or something. Yeah, we'll call back in a minute. And we should yeah, good question. What we should do? What the hearts is the flush draw, so we bet lot when we got the hard flush draw or the hard flush draw blocker or any hearts. And we don't bet if we don't block the not flush draw. And I block the not flush draw. So and we also block a pair from the board, so I think betting should be fine. And if we get raised, I think it's an obvious fold. So yeah, I think this hand was also played well. And yeah, that's it for today. Have to leave now unfortunately. I hope you enjoyed it. And yeah, also check me out on YouTube. I got a lot of videos there and I also post all my Twitch sessions on YouTube later. So yeah, enjoy, have fun. Good luck at the tables. Bye-bye. Yeah, it would be goodbye when I would be able to locate the stop streaming button. Here it is.